Do you want to do it yet? All right, we'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Tell me.
Second. First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That'll take us down to, I guess, we don't have anything under business items, so we'll go down to department presentations.
So that is the business item. This is, this is what we discuss as budget. That's what this whole session is about. So it's a free flow of information. We will give you information, give you numbers, talk about stuff, discuss it, argue, look at what we're talking about, adding to the, to the whole, the grids, and then we'll look again at the step increase by three, plus 3%. So if we work with this from left to right, in that we start with our unaudited balances on the left. What do we, what do we figure we're going to have at the beginning of the budget year on October 1st? And then on the right is what are we going to have at the end of the budget year on September 30, 2024? So we start with our unaudited balance, which is an estimate of what we think we're going to have left at the end of this year. Next to that is the revenue. We have two revenue lines, the police department, which has the Prop P, and then the general revenues, which is everything else. Added together, we're estimating, and these are estimates, $3.168 million is what we're looking at bringing in. Next to that is salaries and benefits. That's for each of the departments. We have gone through all of the line items with the department heads, determine what we think works best, what we think we need, we don't need. So we, we come up with the salaries and benefits and operational salaries and benefits in that how many employees do we have? Do we need more? Operational is going to be all your, your expenses to maintain the operation of the, of the department. So it's your pencils, your pins, and tasers, and whatever other equipment that you're going to need to buy, this, you know, replacement type of equipment, gas, ma, uh, vehicle maintenance. So then we come up with a total on what we see as operational costs. So that is right above the green. So we look at 2.387 million is what we figure for operational, which is good, and leaves us $780,000 because we are not spending over what our revenues are just to run the city. If you're over, then we have an issue, and we have to then go back and look and cut, reduce, and figure out a way to make that even, because if you have too much in that area, then you can't do anything with your capital items. So then we move to the right, and the next column where it starts out with debt service, that is debt service, it's a part of the legislative budget line. Those are items that we either do yearly, they're going to be capital type items, this will be some of the discussion when we come back and talk about the capital items individually. The cost is in the next, in the next column under capital items, what their cost is. That then gives you a department total. And we then look at what that total is compared to what our operational are, and what we think we're going to be spending from there to the end of the budget year, and we figure we have 2.127 million left at the end of September 30, 2024. Then we come down to capital improvements. So these are big ticket items, like the city hall boardroom, we're estimating at 550,000. Website storm one review, so these are a couple of items. Again, we'll discuss that when we get into the individual ones. At 68,000, computers and stuff were for the welcome center. Police department has tools and equipment at 33,400. And then the fire had radios, rescue truck, and a hose. We've included 221, 650, but there is a reduction from what was requested, and we'll go through that when we go through the individual numbers. So that's general fund. General fund money can be used any way. You can spend it on all these categories, and you can spend it in any, any of the categories that are below. Categories that are on the bottom, which are enterprise and dedicated funds, have to be spent for that department. You can't share it. So with the parks, parks has a particular tax. Again, we're estimating 50,000 to be left over in their budget line. 312, 725 is what will be income or revenue expenditure. Our operational is 133,016, part of that is alliance. And then we move our way over, we have a transfer in of 160,000 from ARPA, which is the other capital projects fund. 261,000 is what the capital item expense is for that, and something else we're going to include, and I can't remember what that is, or what they'll, they'll be coming up. So the total department costs is 394,016. You'll notice there's a deficit in parks, there's 31,000, 291. There's always a deficit in parks. Parks takes money out of the general fund, so we have to supplement. So there will be some money that comes out of the general fund if necessary. It's not that we don't have to worry about it, but we estimate that we're going to have to. Uh, streets, we start at 935, 709, because we're not going to get the paving done before the end of the budget year. Our revenues are 849,000, operational 643. We have 10,000, almost 11,000 in debt service there. 780,000, 615 is where our capital expenses are, we'll go through those. So we're estimating 1.435, that's the department total. That'll leave us a balance of 349,000. Want to go through each one of these? You want to look at each one?
If there, only if there's some dedicated, kind of select your art book.
I think, okay, let's, let me jump down to water. The reason I say that is water is, water is one of our trickier ones right now. So water, we, we estimate we'll have 431,000, almost 432,000 left. We're looking at revenues of 1.5 million. We have salaries, that's our front office staff that does the water billing, takes care of, you know, work orders and that. But 67, 628. We're looking at the operational expenses.
That's what the step increase, that's 67,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, operational expenses, which includes alliance, 1,094,021. We have debt service of 256. Looking at capital items of 382. So we're expecting a department total of 1, 1.8 million. That will leave us 191,000. So we're going to ask next year, one of the reasons that that 382 is actually lower than normal is that we're not going to do a major project next year because of the low amount that would be left in water. We would rather have a higher reserve. We have been doing a lot of our capital improvement, water line improvements, and that has started we, cutting down on our reserves that we have left. So we need to start building that back up. So we're not, we'll, we'll come back and ask for a 2% increase in December for water rates, but we're not asking for anything more to try to cover what we have, what we've spent on the water main improvements. Uh, sewer, sewer looks good, actually. 795 is what we estimate for our, our budget for the end of the operational year. 88,000 for revenue. Again, 67, 628, because we divided 50/50 for staff. 627 is the operational costs. 73,000 in debt service. 485,000 in improvements. Capital expenses, 1.253 total, and that ends up being about 350,000. And that's not bad, we like to keep it at 500,000, but we'll, we'll work our way back towards that, and I don't think we'll get to that bottom number here. Um, and then debt service and capital improvement, sales tax, that's what's helping pay for some of these projects. Rural fire is, uh, the, it's another revenue source that we have, because those are the fire tags outside single limits. So that's extra money that the fire department has to use for expenses. Capital projects, most of that is the, the old money from the levee after they didn't do phase four. So it sits in a savings account. We have, we have also deposited 325,000 in general fund over the last three years, or we'll, I'm sorry, last of that's coming up this year. Uh, that was part of a sale from the Piva Building. So we will finish up, maybe it was total of 650,000, we're just doing the last of it. Anyway, um, so that gets you what we figure our total will be, there is some expenses coming out of that. I'm sorry, we have revenues, and that's what's coming in as, as transfers in. 180,000 is our capital amounts to expend, which again is our department total for expenditures. And then we'll have 2.8 million left in that account. And that's a general fund type account. So it is the, one of the few back down here that can be used in any of the funds that you want to use it for. And that's, that's what gives us a little bit of cushion to bring the water department down some, because we do have some savings there that we can tap into. Same as general fund, in case something would happen that's major, like, I don't know, a water main break. If it was more disastrous than what it turned out to be, then we have money that we can utilize for that. So we start off, we estimate our balance at the end of, or, I'm sorry, the balance at the beginning, October 1st, at 7.1 million. Our total estimate is that at the end of September next year, we'll be at 5.6 million. So we roughly talk about a $5 to $6 million budget. Significant, significant expenses. Any questions about the grid?
Yes, um, you talked about on the water situation, a 2% increase. Well, a 2% increase won't near bring us back to where we were if we end up at 191,000. I mean, we're not even close to being back.
No, but we feel that we can, if without any projects coming up, we may do this for a couple of years, we should be able to save enough, because if you got-
So it's more than just a one-year program, right?
We want to see where we feel like we are at the end of next year, because we may be back up around 400,000, and then if we do another year, we don't do anything major, then we get up to another, get up to 700,000.
So it's not the 2% increase, it's the lack of improvements?
Right, right, right.
I mean, that is a little bit concerning, you know, in the fact that we do have something major. So, um, what are alternatives if we do have a major?
That's, we talked about either general fund or capital projects. That's our, that's our backstop.
Like I said, it'd remember from years past that our debt service was so high in the water department, quarter of a million dollars. Were we still paying?
We're still paying on the improvements.
Those certain goods. The 2016 bond, and then that new bond that they took out for the new plant. We're still paying on those two.
Yeah. On the-
New plant.
The 20, what is it, the 2016, maybe it was water line repairs.
It's not a thing, it was water, water line repairs.
Water plants all the way back to 90s, right?
There may have been other, yeah, because there was. Because there wasn't any other water main improvements. And Steve is going to be a little late tonight because of parent-teacher meetings before school starts, so. Hold that question, we may be able to discuss that when he's, after the previous presentation. So one thing we look at on the, on the general fund is that where we look at what our unaudited balance is, where we end up, with both are in pink, and then below the pink, it tells me if we are overspending or underspending what the board has determined to be threshold for the general fund, which is 50%. So we want to keep that above 50%, or 50% or above. So with the step increase, we're at 51%. So that was in the salaries and benefits. On the next page, if you look at the step increase, plus 3%, that ends us up at 50%. So we're just at that threshold, if that's where it sits. Now, to do that, I had to pull out one of the fire department's items, which was a $95,000 truck. So that was, that's, again, the discussion that we'll have when we go through all the capital items, and whether you want that put back in, and then we'd have to figure out how to, how to make that work by readjusting or cutting back something else. So what we're going to do is go through each department, um, and look at the requests that we have individually. Alderman Bennett's been through the, the behind-the-scenes discussion on this. So now it's on this side of the table.
Good evening.
So what we do is we'll go through each department, have them give you a little bit of discussion, go through the items, you ask questions, see if, you know, if there's anything in particular you want to know about. We'll do it department by department. Like, like Steve with Public Works, he'll be multiple departments, I'm multiple departments, so it's a, you know, kind of a, but it's also a chance to get to talk to the department on this, too. I know we get to do that at the meeting, but this is another chance. So what we're going to do is move on to David Bova with Community Development, let him do his overview of what his requests are.
Good evening.
Evening.
So, uh, yeah, he has this page. Community development, three similar requests last year, uh, the historic preservation grant, which we're still administering. Haven't incurred any costs yet, so those costs, if you remember that event, it's September 30th, October 1st, so it'll be in the new budget year. So that grant will basically be paid off in the new budget year. So basically shifting that $15,000 to the next fiscal year. Second one down is historic guide update. This is something we planned in the 10-year plan. The historic preservation guidelines were completed in 2001, so we need to go through an update there, not only through the ordinance, but also the preservation guidelines and see if we can include the updates there. And then the zoning code update, if you remember, that was on last year's budget, but we, the code software was slightly more than we anticipated, so we pushed it to next year. And that's what that would afford us to do.
That amount doesn't seem the same, I thought it was more than 20,000.
The zoning code update?
Yes. Does that include the whole monthly main?
It was either 15 or 20,000 last year. I mean, we combined that and the, uh, the code, online code to pay the 18,000 together. One was 10, one was 15, so they're 25 together.
Right, I thought it was more than 20,000.
I may have refigured that also based on information we got in the situation, came back in last year.
Any questions on those three? I'll probably come to you later this year with a request to apply for another historic preservation grant, but that'll be for fiscal 25. All right, well, thank you.
Okay, next up is tourism. These items were left over from the previous tourism director. Tourism grants, which the board has approved, this is through the state, so it's a matching grant. 35,000 is the state, 35,000 is us, and that's one of the line items that we have in the budget. Full-time assistant, I've had that request from a couple of tourism directors, that was put in for this year, however, I've not included that, that's part of the budget for sure. Yeah, it's right below fire. Visit widget, which was presented to the board, and it seems to be a lot of interest with the board, and I want to make sure that gets into the budget, that's included, 14,000. Digital services is a catch-all. We increased the amount this year, I think we spent 3,000 or 4,000 in past years, so we are increasing that up to 8,000. It was requested 10,000, I've cut back on some of the things that we'll be spending money on since the change, but that's going to be an 8,000 line item. And then, uh, looking at the parking lot, talked with, uh, talked with Chris Collins with the Parks Department, or National Park Service, and then with Steve, Steve Wilson, it's like, what do we, you know, what can we do over there? Might be a good year to seal the parking lot, and we just repainted the stripes, but that was for, uh, sure to fit, and maybe go through and just seal that parking lot. So half of that would be paid for by the National Park Service. So it's a 50/50 split.
So they're pitching it, so it's going to be 16 grand? They have that resurfaced or resealed?
Just resealed, it'd be 8,000.
And they're going to pay maybe 4?
Yeah.
So that might change in that 8,000 go down.
It may go down, yeah, if we can get a better price. I'm just, I'm estimating, I'm estimating high because it is, it is a rough parking lot. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to redo the parking lot. I'll leave that up to the park service if they want, when we take the building.
And we still don't have a date of time when that's going to happen?
No, and that's not, I mean, it's, it's a federal project, and it's going to take time to go through all their processes, and for us to even do our part, and we may even have another agreement with them, like the, like the last one, but maybe reiterating some of the stuff we've talked about. But we have to be careful with trying to put restrictions on it, or requests, because they may not accept it. Know that ahead of time, and just conversations like that.
Pretty sweet deal for them.
Can we go back to, so why did you pull out the full-time assistant on, on this one?
Because I don't think we have the budget for it. So we have four welcome center employees, and that runs us, we budgeted for it, we don't have four, we have two right now. If we add all, all of them, it'd be 36,000 plus benefits. And so another 36,000, one thing is I don't have office space, I don't know where I'd put them. The other thing is you can replace those at the welcome center with a full-time assistant.
If you added in that third person or fourth person as a full-time assistant, also get some catch-all with welcome center time?
Right, right, but you're looking at in addition to, so you're up to 72,000 plus benefits for, if you have all the welcome center staff there and you have a full, a full-time assistant. And the thing with the assistant, and I don't disagree with the, what, what the, what the desire is, is for somebody that can do the social media and keep up with that. That's the main thing. And then other small projects, well, the tourism director then takes care of, it depends on how you want that to go, either the marketing side of it, or that's the person that does your tourism stuff, or that you want somebody to organize bus tours and help people with their tours around town, and organize those, you know, those kind of activities, which is not the way the job description is written right now. Right now, it's written to be a marketing type person.
So we're, we're going to go back to potentially adding more responsibilities to the, the director position?
At this point, I'm going to advertise for a marketing director. I mean, that, that was the, that's what we have, and that was what decided on by the, the last committee, that wanted somebody to come in and do the marketing. Want somebody to get the word out about St. Genevieve, get the tourists here, get them interested, find those paths to get to those folks, to make them interested, and bring them in for the park service, for the shops downtown, for the restaurants.
Will, will that one in, uh, be part of that step increase then? Is that, is that included in the tourism? Because it's not in here. So if we're doing the step increase that we're talking about here, is that including that salary with that step increase? Because that was, that was probably one of the biggest ones, wasn't it? The step increase for the tourism director?
It really was an, an increase, I mean, we're going to hire that person based on what's in that, um, in the, I don't know, uh, in the salary scale. So it'll be from the low to high, it'll be within that range. So at this point, what I'm going to advertise is between 52 and 66, or 52 and 60,000 as a starting salary.
And that's what CBB or not CBB?
Uh, CBIZ.
CBIZ, uh, put in for their, okay. So that's included in already then? Because that's, that was an increase then in the budget for, for their salary?
Well, we already had Tana Lynn's included in there, so that was 55,000 plus, plus benefits.
But that's on the lease side then, 55 up to 63 or something? Is that what you said, the CBIZ recommendation was?
No, no, they didn't really have a recommendation. What I'm saying is, we have a 52 to, to 74,000 dollar range. So what I'm proposing is that we start somebody between 52 and 60. I think that fits into our budget. If we want to go higher, we can go higher, but, you know, is, does that, does that match what our, our other directors are making for the responsibilities that they have in supposed to what this person's responsible for?
Well, I, but I'm having a hard time saying we can't disagree with CBIZ. If we're going with CBIZ's, all their other recommendations, I mean, it's tough for me to say one of us can pick and say, well, we don't want to do the step increase for this one position.
It's, it's based on the step increases, but I'm, I'm limiting it, because I'm putting it out there to advertise, this is the range we'll start somebody. You can make up to 74,000, if you stay with the city line. So based on the first few, from the first level of step, say, and it depends on what the experience that that person has.
Sure.
That we would hire them then.
And then they're coming in with just having welcome staff and not an assistant?
Right.
And we're cutting their budget on digital services. So we've got a position that's pretty weak, because it hasn't had a lot of consistency, and now we're cutting budget, cutting, not cutting salary, but cutting assistants and resources. So we're really putting this person behind the eight ball.
But you're increasing the visit widget, $14,000 that we didn't have.
If we continue with that, right?
Well, we haven't done it yet.
Yeah.
So the assistant, we don't have an assistant now.
Right.
The, the assistant is, that was, that's an added, added salary. So we don't have that.
Why have, if we keep going back to what we were doing and actually, actually regressing, we're cutting salary, we're cutting benefits, we're cutting marketing budget, and cutting a, a future resource that we were talking about, we're, we're really putting this person behind the eight ball, in, in my opinion. So, and are we, we setting ourselves up for this person to fail? I mean, this is the one area, this is the one department that actually can generate revenue besides speeding tickets, right? And I don't, I don't consider, you know, tickets as, as revenue, that's not really where I want to push the, the revenue from. But, and this is the one area, and I, I don't know how the board feels about that, and where you guys feel on, on tourism and, and the value of putting money in marketing, but this is the one where, you know, the state says for every dollar you invest, you get $9 back. Whether you believe that or not, I don't know, but, um, this is the one area where we've had a bad track record, and now we're regressing even worse, in my opinion. Not much, but a little.
Not much, right.
And now the person is going to come in with two, three months, four months of a vacuum where they've got to kind of come back in and, and pick that up. So this would be one where I, I don't want to see cuts, and this would be the one where I'm going to push really hard to make sure that this one's fully funded as, as best we can, if we're going to start looking at step increases and even a, a 3% on top of that.
So what does fully funded look like? Going back to a full-time assistant?
And-
Bumping that digital services back up to 10?
At a minimum, at a minimum. I think we're not giving this person the resources they need to win.
So just remember, we're adding, we're not, we're not replacing, we're not bringing, I'm not cutting somebody out of it, because the assistant doesn't exist.
Correct.
We're, we're starting that position. And then the digital services, I think we're cutting back on some of that anyway, because some of that was stuff that I didn't see the need for, such as Google Workspace, and the intense amount of Google Workspace that, that Tana Lynn wanted to use. So we're going to come back on some of that. I don't think that's a negative, because I want to utilize what we get from Microsoft OneDrive, or Microsoft Smooth.
I am good with maximizing the, the step and the 3%, and, and offering a decent salary personally, but I don't know that I'm in favor of bringing back that full-time assistant right now. I mean, maybe we start at some point with a part-time assistant that can assist, but,
I think we could be flexible, like I said, because we're still short two staff members now at the welcome center.
Right.
So if you did some type of hybrid, you know, work-
And then we don't even know where we're going to leave the house.
Right.
Or entire here. Uh, happy to one comment that got made to me by two people who I think are pretty well socially, uh, uh, they know all the digital things and stuff like that. They said, with our situation without a tourism director, we are not ready to do something like visit widget or one of the other comparable programs out there. And of course, technology definitely is not my strong point, I can tell you that, but, and I don't know if just budgeting a number, just in the event that we do, uh, but I would be hard pressed somewhere along the line to do that based off of what I've been told without having that person in place and stuff.
I, I think you're right.
You know, because how are we, I mean, who's, unless I'm wrong, I remember in the, in the guy that was assuming visit widget that day, in the first part of his presentation, he made a comment that it's going to take somebody's time here to be able to do this, and I don't want to buy something that we're not fully commended to go with that. I realize it's only $14,000, and I realize a budget is an educated guess after day one, you know?
Not, not to go-
But I'm going to be hard pressed to vote for it.
I, I would support that, too, because I wouldn't want to go too many pa, too many days past October before you hire, you know, because you're losing time every day you lose after that.
Pretty certain that it was going to require that full-time assistant to help keep that visit widget up and running, because that does take a lot of time. If you, if you listen to him, it, it's, it's not just the, the staff at the city level, but it's talking to business owners and the other entities and, and, that are having to input information in the visit widget to keep it up to date.
Right.
And so somebody has to be checking on them and making sure that the information is current and populated and, and all that. So, so you're right, that, that, that 14 grand in there for is, if we don't have a tourism director in, in the near future, and we're, we're not funding the assistant, either full or part-time, we're, we're probably throwing our money away on the visit widget.
Doing it half, it seems foolish.
Right.
Well, we, yeah, but do we fund it now to implement later?
In, in six months from now, we have somebody on board and, yeah. In six months from now, we have somebody on board and, yeah.
Right.
I mean, it'd be better to have that money there if we're not depleting it from somewhere else.
And that's what we're...
As long as we're not entering into the agreement right now and spending that without utilizing it.
I don't want Happy in the next few months to try to have to navigate Visit Widget while we don't have a tourism director or if we're a media assistant.
Well, Happy, is that necessarily something you would even initiate prior to hiring the new tourism director, whichever path we go?
And if it gets budgeted, we would go into discussions with Visit Widget just to see what would entail. You know, that's too much time and too much energy on just one person.
You think it's hard waiting until we get?
I think it needs to be budgeted so that that person that comes in, we say, "We've done this investigation, this seems to be a program that would be well-suited for St. Genevieve." You may have that person say, "Nah, I don't like it." So they'll come to you with another suggestion. But at least you got it budgeted to do something.
One person that was real strong against it and stuff told me there's numerous other ones out there, and I think this one was just the one that our previous director picked.
No, she looked at two or three different ones, and this is the one that she narrowed down on saying.
Right, this is the one that she picked, right. So I'm not sure the next person is gonna come along and say, "That's my deal."
I'm okay with leaving it there as a placeholder, because you never know what it'd be four months from now.
And that's what it is, it's a placeholder.
But my biggest concern is what our range is, that we're gonna be hiring the director, completely cutting the assistant and cutting back on digital services. I think we're really setting up this person to fail, and I think we're repeating the same process, but actually making it worse.
Where would that other money come from? Something has to...
Well, it's so...
We're in the first department, I don't know, I guess Dave, Dave was pretty modest. Dave was pretty modest.
Immediately, Eric, it comes from three percent, not doing step plus three, because that gets you fifteen thousand six towards the assistant. You gotta buy twenty extra thousand dollars at that point.
I mean, the sheriff's department, and I hate to beat this drum to death, but the sheriff's department just raised their starting salary to seventy-one thousand dollars for road费. That's more than what they already use right now. Like, I don't think that, I can't not recommend the three percent on the step raise. I mean, I think we need to do everything that we can do for our employees, so I don't think that that's a feasible place to cut.
Sure. Well, now you're looking for the whole thirty-six grand. I mean, to raise, and I'm not proposing this, but to...
I'm probably over thirty-six, if you're just talking about the assistant position?
Yeah, just what's...
Because the digital services and other marketing, so I'm probably looking forty-five, yeah.
Forty-six.
Plus benefits.
Yeah.
Which is fifty percent of their pay.
Yeah, that was the easiest math for me to do at the table. It wasn't the, it's not the best answer, but...
I don't think it's the best answer. In my opinion, it's not the best answer, but, I mean, that's easy, but...
Taking the three percent, you mean, is that what you're taking?
Yeah, taking the three percent would be easy, but I wouldn't be able to do that in good contract agreements.
With our thirty-five thousand dollar match, or grant, whatever we call it, that we get from the state, say it takes us till June one to hire somebody, is that prorated or is it, we lose out the whole entire year?
No, it's prorated. I mean, you only gonna spend what you spend.
Right. So it is prorated, whenever we jump in and get somebody past, it's past October one, then we get it prorated out by the month or something.
But you wanna figure out if that's gonna be fully, so we know what to put in for the budget. I think that'll carry over to the next year, because this won't come back again. If we hire somebody, we keep them in the lube, and so we don't bring this back like every year, we wanna hire, you know, keep the assistant or something.
But that is a state grant, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's a match, so there's forty-five thousand state, thirty-five thousand state.
It can be containers sometimes, this passing out line.
So one thing you can look at, and I'll bring it up now, and this is a possibility, is that the PIBA building sale transfer to the Capital Projects is a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. You don't have to transfer all of it, you don't have to transfer any of it, but that's an agreement that came to the board three years ago to get that money over to Capital Projects. So that's a possibility to cover the amount that would put us into a deficit.
I don't need to make a decision on tourism right now, but I just wanted to kinda get that out there so as soon as we start talking to some of the other departments.
Yep, so this is the start, this is the way it goes. Okay, so good discussion, let's move on to the police and Chief Crump.
Hers is pretty basic this year. First one will be the two SUVs, the state consistent with a five-year rotation, and actually, we're looking at probably one SUV and one truck to replace one of the trucks. The other would be radio for twenty-eight thousand, twenty thousand of that is to match on the ARCA grant that was approved earlier in the year that hasn't came out yet. The other eight thousand will be two handheld radios short from being a hundred percent digital, so that's to buy those two handhelds, and then after that, we'll be a hundred percent digital and ready for the switchover. Copier, eight thousand dollars, that's for our main copier, scanner, printer in the police department, and that's just on recommendation due to maintenance, just to replace that out at so many years to keep maintenance down and any repairs on that. And then the last line item is tasers. About five and a half years ago, we bought all-new tasers, and after five years, they quit doing any repairs on the tasers. We worked five and a half years and we've lost three tasers. I'm pretty sure they're programmed to break after five years. We send them off for repair and we get them back non-reparable, you have to replace them. So we've talked to Taser, and the best program they offer, it's kind of like a lease program, so you buy all-new tasers, they break it out over five years' payment at zero interest, and that covers not only your taser, but all your training material, all your cartridges. If you discharge a cartridge, they replace it for free. And then at the five years, you own the tasers, but essentially, you just need to trade them back in and start the program over, or you're gonna be in the same boat again.
It's an ongoing...
It's just an ongoing thing, yeah. And they're the only company, so you have no choice.
So they do include the cartridges?
Yes, that would be everything, the training cartridges, the training, they actually provide a training suit to do live training, so, yeah, that would include everything, the holsters and everything with them. That's it for the police department.
Were you asking for that old detector?
On the police department side, I did not.
Shows up in the remodel?
That I don't have an answer to. Happy may have an answer for that one.
So any expenses you have on the police cars don't show up under this line item, like fuel, tires?
No, that's on just the normal budget items, not any capital expenses or improvement.
So with the take-home cars and stuff, you still feel that replacing two with the additional mileage and stuff is still going to be...
I think so, because we were, I mean, we were close on mileage, like being a little on the low side at the time, so now this'll put us probably closer to about the seventy, eighty thousand mile mark when rotating our cars, which I think probably good. Doing research, you know, they say anywhere from sixty thousand to a hundred thousand on city drive and you should be rotating out your cars for maintenance reasons, so we're gonna be hitting somewhere in that middle mark. I think more of the cars getting replaced this year is our K-9 car, which is probably the most used, and it'll probably be below over a hundred thousand by the time we rotate it out this year.
So as far as resale value, you don't...
That K-9 car will probably have no resale value, because you've got so much of the interior out of it to put the K-9 cage in, that it'll never go back to the same. You're almost probably better off to sell it as a K-9 car, because we'll be switching brands, so the cage and equipment that's in it won't be reusable, so you're probably better off to leave it equipped and just try to sell it as a pack to the department that can't afford, can't afford new, and it'll benefit them, and you'd get a little bit of money out of it.
So the deal with not staying with the same is just the cost of the vehicle?
Well, because we had Ford in the past, Ford went up so much in price, and now Ford's talking about not even manufacturing police cars, and if they do, they're talking about maybe twenty, twenty-five, and then they're talking about going back to the Crown Vic and it being a hybrid model, so it's kind of up in the air right now. So Dodge and then the Chevy Tahoe are pretty close in price, and they're still about fifteen thousand less than the Fords are right now.
So the Dodge and the Chevrolet are about the same?
Yeah, the Dodge, we paid forty-four thousand for our last Durangos, and the Chevy Tahos are right at the same price. And then the Chevy Silverados are coming in about forty-four thousand, and then the Dodge Rams are coming in at about thirty-nine thousand.
So the pickup is probably gonna go to a Dodge?
Yes.
And even model here, but most of the cages and everything don't fit, like they...
Yeah, they used to, like with the old, in the old days with the Fords, they kept them the same for so many years, you could just transfer equipment over and over. Well, now, about every two years, they change the interior, so you're transferring cages and all that, no longer.
It looks like they're smaller every couple of years.
Oh, absolutely.
Around the ball, a little more...
Exactly.
... efficient.
Yep.
No, like, trick police cars?
Not yet, but they're pushing hard towards the hybrids, but I know the Ford Explorer hybrids, because they're in such demand, there was a couple of them left, they stickered for fifty-five thousand, and Sam says that Ford just sold them to sixty-five thousand, shipped both of them, I hate to California.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chief, can, is, do we wanna talk about the step on step plus three while we got the chief up here? Do you wanna talk about the difference? I don't know, I mean, the three plus, the three percent increase across the board?
Everything's across the board.
Well, I just wanna know for his department, where he stands on that topic, I guess?
Well, I mean, I think Eric touched on it, right now, we're competing against, obviously, St. Gin County is our biggest competition, and with their raise, we've already lost one guy that's already put in his two-week notice, and a second guy that's in the background phase of the sheriff's department due to the pay. I know we'll never meet the seventy thousand dollars that they're paying, but we need to do the best we can to be competitive, and our biggest competition now would be the surrounding county, so where are we at compared to the other municipalities? And they're all in the same boat, with St. Gin County doing what they've done, they're gonna lose their top guy, so they're raising their pay, so, I mean, it's gonna put us in a bad spot if we don't do the step and the three percent to be a little more competitive.
Happy, how much this revenue, this two-ten is probably, that amount has changed though, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was a hundred and ninety thousand last year when we estimated, and we saw an increase in this budget here.
So our percentages stay the same, it's just the amount...
Right, but that offsets, offsets part of what we pay, though.
Yeah.
Right, so we'll get some relief by that increase. That'll help some of our step, so what, about twenty thousand or so?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it depends on how you wanna include that. We look at it again as a total anyway from a general fund, but it helps offset the increase in the eight years ago to get them up to the level that they are now.
Right.
And that's why we wanna keep moving it up.
And my fear, if we're just on just the step, based off my understanding from CBIZ, the step is to get us where we needed to be at the time of the study, so if we don't do the three percent, year one of the study, we're already three percent behind the gun from where we should be.
Not to mention, that doesn't go into effect until January of next year, because that's when the rate is so low, we're already behind the eight ball.
Right.
And I know that this is the unpopular opinion, but I think that we need to revisit the insurance coverages too, not coverages, but the amount that we require the employee to pay. Again, in a competitive market, I think we need to do everything that we can do to keep the guys that we have and to try to capture anybody. I mean, obviously, the sheriff's department can only hire so many people, so, I mean, we still have a shot at some of the academies, but now we're competing against the other agencies that are just leapfrogging, and unfortunately, I think that's just the way it's gonna be for the next few years.
Just wish we could have some federal prisoners too.
Exactly, and they're sitting on a goldmine, that's for sure.
That's a big...
And they've done a great job.
And there's no way we can compete with them, but we need to be competitive with at least the surrounding municipalities, because we're all gonna be fighting for what's left when the sheriff's department's done.
Thank you.
All right, next is Steve Wilson, over street parks, big waters, sort of. Everybody's got the list of capitals. Let's go ahead and start with the park department. Of course, we got the trail grant, restroom money there, and the rolling trailer, let's say a landscaping trailer, make the lawnmowers, side load, weed eater racks. Right now, we're using a old, I don't know how old it is, old utility trailer, got wood sides on it, mowers barely fit on it, so trying to replace that unit there. Any questions on the park stuff?
The trail grant, when would that start? I forgot.
We should start construction next spring, if everything works out like it's supposed to.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to streets. Fifty thousand for stormwater, I think that's gonna be up on Ninth Street. Hundred-and-thirty-five thousand for a new backhoe, current backhoe we have now, it's got quite a few issues for a five-year-old backhoe.
But you still have two?
Well, we have one. There's a shell of one back there.
Right.
So, so that's a replacement of the backhoe. Used dump trucks, that's something we've been looking for all year, trying to find, we tried to find a new one, couldn't find a new one, we expanded it to used vehicles, starting to see some that market, as other municipalities and water districts and cities etc. are getting the new ones in that they ordered two years ago. So we're starting to see some trucks at the market, so. Street projects, some of that is this year, two hundred thousand is for the current, the upcoming budget. We got sixty-two thousand for the tap grant, twenty-five thousand for the sidewalk reimbursement, and sinkhole repair on Oakwood. So that would be the south sinkhole, far backside by Valley Baseball Field, that's washed, eroded, to the point we can, it's very hard to maintain, we can't, we can't get equipment in there to take care of it.
So what are you talking about doing there, just kinda...
I think somebody needs to come in with a dozer, clean it up, reshape it, put a nice belly in it where we can maintain it.
But you're not actually that thing that's...
The structure, no.
Right.
So, but right now, we can barely get in, I'd say twenty-five percent of it to get maintenance done.
Get rid of a bunch of the trees and stuff.
Trees, if you get down in there, there's about a six-foot washout at the bottom, but we can't cross, so.
Back up on the street project, so, I'm sorry, so on that four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, you're only anticipating two-hundred of that for this coming year?
Correct.
And you're just...
So we still have about two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand for this year's projects to be done. That won't be done until after October.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's carrying.
Okay.
So then you have another two-hundred thousand that you'll be doing.
Streets, any questions?
Yes, I gotta ask you about the backhoe.
Current backhoe's still functioning, has no air conditioning, no four-wheel drive. Windows has been replaced already once, but it's not a reliable piece of equipment at this point. Now, we would like to save it for the brush site and the salt pile, so...
So we can't offset any costs, so we're gonna keep it?
Correct.
And the other one is not sellable?
And then we'd be using our brand-new backhoe in the fire and the...
No, I'm saying if you...
The one that you said was the shell, that needs to disappear, that's not sellable?
No, that thing, it's just about rusted solidly. The backhoe's in better shape too.
Mine's in great shape. I take care of it. Not to, not to pick on anybody, but I take care of it.
If you guys wanna see it, come on back.
So is that basically just due to lack of maintenance, lack of...
Lack of maintenance, lack of skilled operating.
That's disheartening.
Yes.
So what is our solution that it doesn't happen again?
All our equipment's on a maintenance program now.
What about the operators?
And that was, that was the backhoe that you acquired for Alliance to go over.
We have multiple skilled operators on all sorts of equipment.
So what kind of a timeframe? I know the dump truck is up in the air, but is the backhoe more attainable or...
Backhoe's more, more achievable I believe.
Can you throw a dump bed on it?
A dump bed?
Pull it, pull it.
Pull a dump trailer.
You wanna talk about salary and your thoughts? I know probably where you're gonna go, but, you know, with you guys being separate on Alliance, how are you guys doing overall on keeping your staff? how are you guys doing overall on keeping your staff? Not directly a three percent for our city staff, but for you guys, how are you guys doing on maintaining and keeping employees?
We did have a position that was open for, it wasn't exactly one position. It was like one position and then it got filled and then opened up and then filled. So we, we went through a little spell where we had one position open for a while, but right now we're full staff.
So where's our contract with Alliance of?
We have three more years before renewal.
On public works?
Yes, on all of them.
On all of them?
Yeah.
And we're tied to an increase there?
It's contract negotiations.
Or we had a cap on that?
We do, we've included a percentage as the increase, but we'll still have that, that come before us, before the end of the budget.
That stormwater project up on Ninth, would that be alleviated if we move ahead with the bigger stormwater projects? Like the one we're going to be going to?
Two different areas. So what is in this fifty thousand dollar?
I don't have the paperwork in front of me. Do you remember that offhand?
There's a number of, we've got two things going on with that. We're, we're getting an engineering study done on Ninth Street. And this was supposed to be a stopgap to get open a couple of the stormwater pipes that are up there now. They're going to spots where they're just dead end. I mean, it, it's collapsing, there's problems getting the water at least away and off the street.
Nothing under Market Street, right?
No. Pretty much runs from what's up on Washington Maple down towards Jefferson.
I know it's pretty pieced-mealed up and down through there, so.
Yeah, if you look at the one on the, storm drain on the east side of the road, that one runs under the road, through a culvert and discharges on the ground, which is fine. The other.
The government hasn't given us any idea of overall cost on Ninth Street, have they?
Yeah, early on, it was around, I believe, three-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollars.
For the whole street?
Yeah.
So would this fifty thousand be, it's just a stopgap, or would that have to be something that would be done along with a possible future project? Or would it eliminate part of that?
I would say it would probably eliminate some of the smaller stuff on the top.
Right.
Water and sewer?
We've underwater and sewer. You notice some of these items are combined, some are from this current budget year, some, some are new. So first thing to note, the first item is water main valves. They're not water main valves, those are filter valves in the water plant. Those are the, the filter valves that allows us to redirect water, shut the filters down for maintenance. They're used, they're operated, each filter's operated at least once a week. There's four valves on each filter that operate in automation. They're getting to the point now where we have to work on them just to get them closed, sometimes we, it, it's, it takes us a good while to get them shut. Fear is at one point they're not going to. Water tank maintenance, that's the maintenance agreement on the water towers. Water tower inspections, cleanouts, painting, all that's required by DNR. Water plant roof, thirty-seven thousand for a new coating on it. Condensates leaks when it rains around the skylights. Get a good rain or some high winds, it's about rains in there.
We can't recycle that rain and?
Everything we got's open top. Next one's one of the combined ones. Hundred-and-seventy-five thousand on each side, water and sewer. That's in our current budget year, which is being carried over, because we're not expected to see the truck until January of February. Same thing on the tanker truck, that'd be eighty thousand water, eighty thousand sewer.
These are both new vehicles?
Yes. The tanker truck, no, that's not going to be new, sorry.
We actually combined the tanker truck into the sewer department because it's the low amount that we have in the water department.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Water well improvements, that's the cleaning of two wells, two of the city wells. We clean two every other year. We have a high iron, high manganese water table that we pull out of, cobs of wells up. Costly, replace the pumps about twelve thousand dollars now. If you don't clean them out, that's what you get. Start replacing pumps about every three months. That'll clean out two wells. Price of cleaning out one well's substantially more expensive than cleaning out two, just for mobilization purposes and.
Is this something you do or is that outsourced?
No, it's outsourced. It costs you about seventeen thousand to do one well, or twenty-five to do two. Any questions on the water? Water and sewer. Back truck, still a hundred-and-seventy-five being carried over, if you not can see the truck. Hundred-and-forty thousand in there for sewer main work. GIS equipment and subscription, that's fifteen thousand. The, that is our, for our GIS equipment, which would be our data collection unit and the subscription to maintain it. Current machine we have now, we've had for almost ten years, and I think we spent eleven thousand dollars back then. The machine, we've kept it so long, it's no longer accepting updates, and it can no longer perform work.
It's pretty important piece of equipment.
No machine, no data correction. Again, the tanker trucks after that, and the wet well cleanout, that'll be at the wastewater plant. That's the wet well between the two clarifiers. Hydrogen sulfide gas has pretty much ate up the concrete. It'll have to be re-coated, cleaned out and re-coated. Got to get an epoxy coating.
That's the big tank outside the water plant?
No, that's the, that's the wet well in between the two clarifiers.
This back truck, that's also the same truck that does the jetting?
Jetting, power washing, vacuuming, pumping, yes.
How many guys we got certified, I'm sorry?
I, I learned another use on that and stuff from up there on Ninth Street, sucking out those.
Hydroelectrication, yes.
You know, of all of the stuff that gets down inside there and stuff. I watched them dig in and clean out one of those by hand, just to get, you know.
I did it yesterday.
Right.
How many guys we got certified on back trucks?
We have three.
Can we get four?
We'll have more than that by the time we get a truck. The company that the truck's coming from offers a certification course with the purchase. One week onsite training.
But you're still going to keep the small jetting trailer?
Yes. Yeah, there's lots of times where we've got to get into one, a situation where you have to use one jetter to pull over to another one. Thank you. Pretty much enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Kate Sager with Park Department.
Good evening, everyone. Most of you are aware that over a year ago, we started a recruitment retention committee that was formed with all the men and firefighters, trying to figure out what to do about our personnel issues. In fact, we're always shorthanded. And the first two items that we have listed in ours are brought to you at the recommendation request of that committee. The uniform line increase is basically at the recommendation, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar holding allowance per man. Right now, when we put somebody on, we give them two T-shirts and a ball cap, and that's it. From that point on, anything they want, they have to purchase on their own. So this is a way of showing some appreciation for the job they're doing for nothing for the city, and it also covers some of the things that get ruined doing our job. So we're asking for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a man, and we will have guidelines set on what they're allowed to purchase and everything set by myself with the committee. It'll be basically uniform T-shirts, pullovers, sweaters and hoodies and things like that to help get the guys through. We have a lot of guys, especially like our maintenance crew on Wednesday night, to get in there and get greasy and dirty working on the trucks, and then they get ruined equipment. So we're asking for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a man, and that's based on a full roster. So we probably wouldn't use all that, but we have to base it on a full roster with the hope and desire someday that we do have a full roster.
And that is based on per man, per year?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah. And that would also help, we also, when we bring them on, also give them a uniform after a year. That's the, the blue shirt with the nice pants and a, a few things. Right now, we make them buy their own black shoes, just to be a way to have them be able to buy shoes or replace uniform things too, once their initial purchase is made. Yeah, second thing, the firefighter pay increase. Basically, right now, our guys get a three-hundred-and-sixty-dollar a year stipend, is what I would call it, and that's based on attendance at trainings and things like that. You have to make at least three-quarters of our monthly trainings to get the full three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. That's a recommendation request of the committee. They want to bring that additional five hundred onto that, make it eight-hundred-and-sixty. It's another way of doing something for the guys that are volunteering. Other than the Wednesday night crew and myself, my assistant chief right now, nobody over there gets anything for anything. And right now, we're running between two-hundred-and-twenty-five and two-hundred-and-fifty calls a year. So there's quite a commitment from these guys. It's a way to show some more appreciation for them. The radio grant for the hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, this is the grant that I've been kind of talking about, that we would apply through the AFG, the federal grant system. The hundred-and-seventy-six thousand's based on eight thousand dollar per handheld cost estimate. This grant, if we go through with the application, probably won't be filed until August or September of next year. And if we were getting lucky enough to get that funded, our portion is actually only five percent of the estimated cost here. So the, the total cost, if we would be granted, would be less than ten thousand dollars. But we put that in there because that's what the cost would be if we were to buy them outright. And that would bring us up to a hundred percent appliance on the digital like the police department is. With the other grants that I've gotten in the past, all of our mobile radios will be up by that time, and we will, we will have eight handhelds that we brought up to speed, but we have like thirty-one handhelds, because we have someone, different trucks, so a guy can grab one when they get off the truck.
Are your handhelds similar to the police department handhelds? Same, same?
I would assume so. We're, we're looking at eight thousand, motorola eight thousands, and they're running about eight thousand dollars apiece right now.
So this is, if you were to go out and buy all of those without any kind of funding?
Correct.
So grant funding is put in as a revenue line, and then the expenditure is going to be a hundred-and-seventy-six total. But our match may only be eight thousand dollars. But you have a revenue line that reflects that, that grant.
Thank you.
I'd be helpful to have that revenue line off to the side, just to see.
That's just all in terms of the.
Right.
Any, any grant is going to have a revenue source, a sum source, and it's going to be included with the three-point-one million that we have as revenue for the year.
In reality, if we apply for that grant, it probably won't hit until next year's budget. It probably won't hit in the one we're talking about now, but we have that in there, so you can see it. The next item was four-inch hose. You're probably aware, about four years ago, I tried, I tried for a AFG grant to replace all our hose. Most of our fire hose over there is at least twenty-five years old, and to replace all the hose, the grant was for eighty thousand dollars. But according to their criteria, we don't run enough house fires to qualify for that grant. So it kind of dropped, dropped back to the back burner. We do buy a few pieces of hose every year that replace, have, that have holes or whatever, but for the majority of it, our, our hose over there is at least twenty-five years old and really ought to be replaced. And that was the cost on the four-inch, so if we do four-inch maybe this year, and maybe look at doing our smaller attack lines and things like that next year's budget, like a half and a half thing. The fire truck, like rescue, basically what I had in mind there was a, like a one-ton duly utility bed. When COVID started, we switched from running all our EMS calls in the great big rescue truck and started running, running in our little pickup truck, and we can put four people in that cab, and that way it was an easier truck to clean for COVID reasons, and it was a smaller truck, because honestly, most of the time when we go out on EMS assist, it's go get the stretcher or help lift somebody up. It's not really a big deal, we don't need a lot of equipment. So it was a, keeping them miles down on the big truck, and part of the problem with running that little truck is we carry EMS supplies and electronics in there like an AED. I can't keep that in the bed because the bed gets wet, so I have to keep that inside the cab, which takes away some of the seating and makes it tighter in the truck, try to get some manpower in there. So what I was looking at there would be like a one-ton four-door cab, utility bed, that we can put the things we have in the cab in a utility bed on the side of the truck, and have some room for additional storage. That truck would basically replace our pickup truck right now and be used for utility vehicle, for manpower transports, for mutual aids and that kind of stuff too. And we were just ballparking at about ninety-five. There used to be a thing called the state bid that you could get pickup trucks, like we bought our last pickup truck. Right now, the state's not doing that anymore. They use a preferred vendor. They tell you that you should buy it from this company, and that's all they really do. They don't have the, the cheaper vehicles, so we were figuring that is a stock truck and probably a twenty, twenty-thousand dollar bid being put on there. The turnout gear is just part of our annual replacement. We try to do four sets a year. For NFBA, you're not supposed to use any gear over fifteen years old. And we start off our people with whatever gear we have available, and as, after they get a limited time in service, then we try to buy them some decent new gear. And all our gear is custom fit, so it fits better, and it makes it easier to work, instead of just buying stock stuff that might be great big baggy on somebody. So we try to do four sets every year. We got lucky last year because we had the four sets in the budget, and we got an ARB grant for four more sets, so we got eight sets in this current budget year.
Open to any questions?
Know how to bring this up, but anyhow, I'll just throw it out there. Mike and I was on the committee. We spent several hours meeting with Kenny and, and the department heads there, trying to find a way. Full staff is how many?
We were rostered for twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, and we're down?
I'm down five right now.
Five.
And in November, potentially two more, so a total of seven.
Those two in this fall and stuff, I guess was the part that was pretty scary there, what, forty-year veterans?
I've got one that is going to retire for sure in November, and he's got forty-six or forty-seven years. The other one is having second thoughts about walking out cold turkey, so he may hang out a little bit, but he's in the forty-three, forty-four year range, and we just lost a fifty-year guy alive here.
Right. That's the part that, you know, to be down seven people out of twenty-nine. Don't know if this is the right answer or not, but this is the best we can do, but is trying to do something to give them something. I know we've heard comments, you know, from the board here, that this is a brotherhood, it's a, you know, all of the above, it's, it's a hobby, it's, you know, it's not working out that way. We're going to have to do something to try to keep people.
It's a hobby, so your house catches fire.
Exactly, and when my house catches on fire, I want to know that people are going to be there. I think this is a cheap investment in security.
If I may, we talked about in the recruitment retention, doing things like pay per call and everything. When you look at that, we're running on average two-hundred-and-thirty calls a year. If you do a ten-dollar per person call, look how much that's going to add up to versus what we're doing here. And we average on a typical call, eight to ten guys, so ten, ten guys times ten for every call, that's a bunch of money. This is a way to show the guys that we actually think about them, and we've always had for other agencies within the city, folding allowances for uniforms. Back with Public Works there, we had uniforms for the volunteers that put their butts on the line all the time. Give them two T-shirts and say thank you. And that's all we're doing for them. So. Any questions? Thank you.
So we're going to the rest of the budget areas. Back to the front page, the main page. We'll start with legislating. Team of building sale, this is what we started, I think made it four years ago actually, so it started with 300,000. And then worked our way down to the last team of 125,000, I think 625,000. That was owed to the, to the projects fund. Administration, the city hall boardroom, number of items that we've talked about on that, our budget request is $550,000, recommending that. Copier, a copier's five years old. I've seen copiers begin to deteriorate at five years and it becomes an issue. We've had some issues with it the last few months. We're looking at getting another copier, budgeting 8,000 for that. For the ARPA funding that we have in administration, we have the website, which we had budgeted or talked about earlier as part of the ARPA funding that we're spending. And then we have leftover stormwater money that was for engineering. So we still have a few, we still have a review of the last two areas that we looked at. And then we also have a review that's being done on the progress Parkway side. That we haven't gotten back yet. And that's being done through a different group. So we should have a report on that, but that is part of the funding that, where that comes from. Any questions on those two?
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're using leftover ARPA?
That isn't leftover. That was what was approved, oh, two years ago, when we budgeted out how we wanted to spend the ARPA money. We have to spend by, we have to allocate it by 2024. We have to spend by the end of 2026. So part of it was for our website and part of it is that we haven't had all the stormwater done, any of the stormwater engineering. And that's what we're waiting for.
So have we recognized a revenue then on that already?
Oh, yeah. That's in your capital, it's in capital projects.
Happy, I know this $550,000 seems like a lot of money, but you know, if you get around any of our neighboring communities, you'll see we are behind gate wall there. But, you know, we have an older building there. We've put money in to partially do it now. My understanding is this will basically have all of the mechanical systems, everything, wiring, heating and cooling, all the other day. Along with, you know, some better offices and, you know, things like that. But I know there's a lot of money, but I'm telling you, I think this money will spend. I don't know that we can do it any cheaper. You know, than that stuff, but I think it's something that needs to be definitely done. And stay where we are, the local, the town. You didn't have any parking lot improvements in that one, did you?
That's next phase. I think for the next budget year, what we look at.
Yeah, because that needs to be addressed.
I'd like to do a parking lot and exterior, building exterior.
That's, I'm, you know, I get feedback on that. We're renovating an old building. What would it cost the, you know, what would a million dollars? We look at the police department, we look at the city hall side, boardroom, and then, you know, outside and parking lot. I mean, we're kind of, we're knee deep in it now. I don't know how we pull back, but.
I think you have to look at, and you know about this, because you're in real estate, you'd have to purchase the land first. Where do you put it? And we're downtown, and that's going to be a big issue too. It's like, who would like the city hall to remain in the heart of the city?
Yeah, but we're lacking retail space too in the downtown area. So you could look at it both sides, you know. So the city hall be there. We moved, we moved the fire department outside of town for accessibility, you know. So I, I'm not going to question, you know, we're.
For Joe, I could.
We're in the middle of the stream at this point. I don't know how you get out of the middle of the stream.
Well, I, I could only, I could only say, we didn't, we didn't wake up one day and hop in the middle of the stream. There was a previous board that researched and.
Spent a lot of time and looked at other buildings.
That was the solution they came up with. I understand one board's decision won't, won't carry through to subsequent boards, but we can assure those people that we, we looked at all those things.
In real estate, the buzz term is location, location, location. And I think it was the determining factor and it was big enough that, you know, yeah, it pays more than this and stuff that it'll. It's best overall, that board came up with best overall decision was to.
Best use of funds, I guess, per second.
Yeah, we, we looked at two buildings. We looked at the cost for building new, I mean.
Yeah, you're looking at a, well, deal of real estate to buy the property and build the building, you're looking at two and a half times this easily.
I'd be happy to help you answer questions if you can.
Copiers just wear out? Used down? All, all of that stuff.
Any other questions on that? Look your way down the page to the terrorism tax. There's a marketing line there. So this is the TTC money that we have revenues. We're up to about 75,000 now, and we're actually going to bank. We dedicated 40,000 kind of based on discussions that we've had with TTC. So what you're doing is approving the 40,000 total. TTC will then divvy it up where they want it to go. So that's what that 40,000 is for. And it has to be done for tourism, has to be done for bringing tourists to St. John. On the back page, we have the capital projects line. Engineering and cop plan, engineering is for Ninth Street. Cop plan is the cop plan that we're continuing to, we hope have, will have finished by the end of the year. So that's the remainder of the funds to pay for that. And then cybersecurity, that is what remains out of the ARPA funding that we're using for cybersecurity improvements. So that will include phones and other, other items that we worked with forward slash to approve.
And how is that working out?
So far, so good, except for right now, since we don't have the phone lines that we're supposed to have. Because the phone company that we're moving to couldn't get everything done on their end for the PRI, which is the type of phone system we're connected to, they couldn't get it done until next Thursday. But we, at the three month, they had to have three months to do it. And we got it put in at the end of May, well, now, end of August, that's three months ago. So we'll do, finish the PRI next Thursday, hope to have the police department running on Friday and the city hall running on Monday. Right now, we're running kind of a cobbled system of two phones and that's it. We have two lines that work. We can call people back. We can run up here and talk on the phone. And the hour of it works, we're going to make it work.
So we only have phones in one spot?
Yeah.
Wow. Just like the old days.
So we're installing small boxes out there.
Bugs, you don't have to climb the post like Green Day.
Drive through and see that the light's flashing, you know you got a call coming in.
Well, that's basic.
It may be coming. Wasn't that long ago. And then at the bottom of that, of that back page, is kind of our large ticket items. It was requested that we list those out, so you know what the, what the amounts are to paying for some of the, like health insurance, liability, those kinds of expenses. Everything else is built into the budget.
These aren't increases, correct? These are just.
This is what we were proven.
Anticipate, yeah.
Yeah.
So happy on the workman's comp side. I know we have big claims. That still stays on what, is it three or five years?
One more year. It remains one more year.
Three years, right? But then, that's not how much difference that is.
No, I think it will be because your, your mod number will come down to see the difference. We had a significant number at that, in that first year.
Right.
So pulling that out is going to be pretty significant. And then you catch up with not having your public works department, your street parks, including your mod.
So what was our mod package set over to, which means we'll pay your times of the month?
You've got, I think we have a little bit surplus in the band, but no, they're not anticipating it. There's nothing in there, so.
Well, you know, band is, you'll see that on the, they're not asking for anything. I don't include them in, you know, because they, they're going to purchase what they purchase. They ask us for a flat amount. We put the flat amount in as a budget number.
Cemetery, same way. You didn't anticipate much difference there besides maybe some tree trimming this year?
Right. Uh, let's see, what do they, so we got the grass cutting, that contract will be up. So that will increase over what we've had to pass, what I estimate. And then we got a request to do some limb cutting that's out in the main memorial cemetery. There's a tree with a big limb that hangs out over Fifth Street. So we're looking at getting that done. And then, and then I probably overdid that with the, the amount, but if we have any other trees that we need to take care of, we can take, we can do that as well.
And no projects with special road district?
They were going to, no, because we don't have any revenue coming from them for any of the street projects that we're doing. They're just talking about doing Little Rock Road. So that would be.
We don't have to, we don't have to match on that one? I thought they were asking for a match?
Yep. They were just asking if they could do it.
Happy, back to the cemetery. Had a question come up here a while back and stuff. Down on, I guess, the, the side next to Eric Scott. There was a little section added there. We put in a, did we put that little short piece of road in? And is that our portion of the cemetery?
I'm assuming all of it is, without the.
Yes, it is. The part he's talking about.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's a little section where the road goes out to, out to Roger.
No, this is just a little short. It's the very end down next to Am Road.
Right. So there's. So you have, this is, this is the cemetery here. This is the memorial cemetery, Crossland Cemetery here. And then there's a long piece, but it's thin, that would be the road that goes out to Am.
Yeah, no, this is just the dead end.
On the new part that we added, there's just a section that we extended from the middle over to the new part.
Oh, you're talking about the road extension we did last year?
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah.
I just noticed.
So, but we had, that's not the end of the cemetery property. That was, that was just, we're going to eventually extend out further, or can extend out further.
Because, you know, it's always been that, that block or brick wall has always been kind of the deciding between what's our part and which church is part. But that little section out there doesn't kind of line up with that wall, if that wall was a straight line. There is no wall there, it's just.
I, I don't know how that, that, you know, without a survey on something like that.
Right.
What's the question?
Well, you know, there's, there's been several graves put in there recently and stuff, and they were questioning, you know, what, you know, because the area outside the wall is non-Catholic. And inside the wall was Catholic and maintained by the church. But I didn't have an answer for what that little section was.
Because it filled up and we had nowhere else to go, so we had to extend, we had to extend south.
Right.
But there's also spaces available, or spaces that have been bought that get filled in on occasion.
Right.
If somebody dies.
Right.
And that may be what they're seeing. All right. Any other questions on what we presented? I see all of this tiger has the line items out. If anybody wants another copy of that, we haven't changed anything. I'll get that to you.
What's next on the agenda?
Okay. So you can either finalize the capital requests tonight. You can finalize the increases, rate of pay. And then we also have city administrative compensation as, as part of discussion tonight. So this is where you can decide how you want to proceed. Because you got everybody here, so you give me questions, we can, still have another question that, that I can't answer. We have the people here to answer that.
Have we agreed on any of the capital items that we went through so far? We've had a lot of discussion.
I mean, as, as presented, it comes down to the step plus the three or the step without the three. And these are the numbers that we have to, to look at with everything that, that was presented tonight, correct?
Correct. If you make any additions and no subtractions, we got to figure out where we're going to balance that with the general fund. And again, with the other funds, we also have the amounts of what we expect those bottom lines to be at the end of the budget here. And you can look at those to determine if you, if you want to pull something out, add something in. If there's something that we didn't capture as an improvement or as a, as a job that you want done.
Happy, at the last meeting, I asked a question, you know, this, this amount of money that we're looking at, this $62 or whatever it was, amount for sidewalks that we're going to have to repair. And we have a, a good probability we may not get reimbursed for several thousand dollars worth of those. I don't see that number. I mean, is that just the general revenue?
That'll come back as a capital improvement for streets. I'm not budgeting in anything right now because we don't have any length, lengths of repairs that we need to make. And if, depends on the amount of reimbursements that are asked. I'll pull it out of that line item if we decide we need to repair some sidewalks. If nobody makes enough requests or we're utilizing those funds.
About that number I gave last week two is certainly elevated. So I think I told you in the realm of 40,000. We've had another one that's doing it themselves. It's probably going to come down to 20 or 25,000.
That's good.
But we could still recruit some of that money down the road. It's probably not going to be in the year, in the budget year, right? It'll be, it could be two, five, 10 years down the line.
Archbishop is also drafting a contract or an agreement that they could sign where they could pay it this year or they could pay it over 10 years. And that's a state statute.
And only one item I have a hard receive. I'm not questioning your expertise and stuff. Just really having a hard time with that backhoe because that was $125,000. And I'm wondering, you know, to have a machine of whatever value it is, I mean, I would think it would be just to push that. And, and you're right, I don't want to take the new backhoe over there because I know it was caught on fire twice. You know. I mean, something cheaper than a backhoe to push that back. Because I mean, did we use the backhoe or did we use just the front end loader?
We used both.
Both?
Yeah.
Do we have a front end loader?
We still have a John Deere, don't we? But it's not big enough.
What's that?
That John Deere that we had the sickle mower on.
Yeah, we still got a little truck.
But that's not big enough to push that.
No, there's no loader.
Right. That's right.
I mean, that's probably, those are probably my two that, well, the three, the tanker truck, we're buying new. So I mean, that's, that's a, a savings there. I'm going to probably make do with that. And then the new back truck and the new backhoe, of course, those are two of the biggest ones.
Is that tank truck used?
Our current one we have now?
No, the one you're talking about.
Tanker truck or the back truck?
The tank.
The tank truck can be used, I use vehicles.
Okay. I thought it was the new one.
I mean, I've, I've seen the back truck. I mean, I've, I've seen the back truck work, and, I mean, I, I know how valuable it is. It, it definitely makes light work, some of that stuff that you guys got to get into.
Yeah, that truck was actually purchased last October, um, we're just still waiting on it to be built.
And are these, I apologize if this is an accepted question.
We have an existing, I'm sorry, we have an existing contract on the Honda back truck?
Yes.
Yes.
But these aren't general funds, if you're trying to, are they any water funds? Or they're dedicated funds or not general?
And with a two percent water rate increase, I know we're gonna have people asking again. You know, it's every year we get the rate increases, so.
And then that's why we're down to a hundred and ninety thousand also.
In the funds, yeah, backup. Yes.
Yeah, we had the consolidated plan, and we wanted to really get after that, but we got after it a little too quickly.
Do have a question on the fire stuff. Um, going back to the truck request and the radios. So the one seventy-six is the total bill for the radios, but that, that is not netting out the grant money that we could receive. I mean, is that, am I correct there so far?
Grant money is gonna be reflected in whatever it is.
Right, but I don't, I mean, it's not on here, because we don't, we don't anticipate that hitting this budget year.
No, it's included already, it's just that we're reflecting what the expenditure is gonna be. So that when we come in and say we need to write a check for a hundred and seventy-six thousand, so we can get a hundred and sixty-five thousand as a, as reimbursement.
Right.
We're not hitting.
So we have to cut the check initially, and then we get reimbursed back?
Yeah.
But that might not happen until next budget year, probably?
Now that we're looking at, now it may not happen until the next year.
Well, I, I just, I see it as a total expenditure with no grant offsetting, so are we, and I know we cut the, the truck out of the equation. So are we just anticipating just having to float that amount of money for a certain amount of time at the end of this budget year, carrying into next budget year?
Yeah.
So are we then anticipating being able to add the truck back into? Because we backed it out, right, for ninety-five, but, but I mean, our total cost, once we're, once we're, we receive the grant, would only be maybe somewhere eight thousand out of, out of our pocket. But we're, if we're digging ourselves for the total amount now, I mean, are we making a plan to put that truck back into budget for next year?
We'll look at it and see.
Okay.
We do have a fire truck in the next couple of years, and we'll have to.
Right, and I, I see that in our senior plan, and I've had some conversation, a conversation with Chief about it too, I mean, I just.
But we're not guaranteed that radio, right?
We're not guaranteed.
And we need to switch from analog to digital, I mean, that's why we're spending all this money for St. Francis's repair.
Correct.
I mean, we're spending, we're, we got double billed, uh, and they're not gonna give me to say that they, that wasn't ordered incorrectly. Uh, I, I, I want the services, but I don't think that the tax initiative was ordered very fairly.
I don't want to re-licate that.
Well.
I, I agree with you, uh.
So we have to keep that one seventy-six in there, because if we don't get the grant, we gotta spend.
I get it, I, I just, you know, I see a lot of line items for the other departments, and I know, you know, Chief was hoping to get that truck, and I see we backed it out, so I, I was just more or less advocating for his side of it here. I just want to make sure that we can keep that in mind, um, whether it be, you know, obviously, we may not get that grant this year, and for some reason we would. I mean, is that something we could reconsider at that point, because we would have, you know, potentially.
We, do we have a budget amendment then? And, and.
So, okay, so if, if we don't include that, we don't include the radio grant, then the revenue goes away too. So your revenue line is gonna reduce by a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, no?
Right, but I just didn't see it captured here, is that, was it already included in this revenue number?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
As I mentioned a while ago, I might have another column.
The only reason I was thinking that is that it wasn't, is because I see like the prop key money is this year, but I, I thought that that item would be on this grid here somewhere, maybe if I'm missing it, I'm sorry.
No, because we did that, I did that a couple of years ago, nobody understood what I, when I was doing it, when I put it into welcome center grants. So I've left that out. I don't show it as a, as a revenue, as a, as a dedicated revenue, as opposed to the property tax.
Right, so in this three million or so that we're talking here, that, whatever that amount may be, that we're anticipating that grant to be for, is included in that number? Okay, that, that's, that's all I was just putting my, because I didn't know if that was supposed to show in this, so, um, that was the only question I had there with regards to that.
Maybe this is the wrong time to ask this, but when did the state, did it go for?
We're going. It's, there's only one contractor, and now it's third contractor instead of, we, we used to have choices between, uh, different vehicle groups. They've all just abandoned the state, got state purchasing policy, and I think only Dodge has given them a quote on what these vehicles were cost. The rest are by an awful lot. They're not, they're not digging it out anymore. So is this, this past year after Coglin, you're just gonna get the rest of the truck?
So are you inclined to not include the backhoe?
Yeah, I don't want to shut him that question, Steve's expertise or judgment of, of backhoe, it's just, I thought we had a machine for the next five or ten years or something.
So my understanding was after the loan is paid off, which is this year, that the backhoe would be traded in for a new one, and we do another lease, lease purchase. So what we're asking is that we are able to keep the existing one, so we don't have to use the new one in these places we don't want to use them, use it. And then we just get rid of that other piece of, uh, that we have sitting in the back. So that's why we're asking for backhoe this year.
Right. Any idea what the trade-in value of that would be if we?
We're still gonna need to use back.
I understand, but I was thinking about something less than a backhoe, you know, just a front-end loader maybe, but that's why I asked, did they use the backhoe for it also? Because I know, uh, years ago, when we bought this, that we were gonna take the backhoe off of the old one, and not use it because it was unsafe. Then, I don't know, whatever, we just didn't use it.
I mean, Steve, if, I mean, I, if you look at a backhoe, you look at a back truck, you look at the tanker truck, uh, tanker trailer, um. You know, there, there's a lot going out in streets and water and sewer, of course, and that's, you know, um, some of our, our biggest line items, uh, departments. If you, if you got by another year with the current backhoe, and we pushed that one back a year, and just got stuck with the maintenance costs, I mean, we do have.
I mean, that's up to you, I mean, we can do that, with the current backhoe, just continue using it for a period, right?
But we're not gonna trade it in anyway, right? We're gonna be using it for.
We're gonna use it anyway.
Not, not pushing up, you know, brush and pushing off salt, I mean, we still, we. Is it a hundred and thirty-five? A hundred and thirty-five? If you bought a backup, you know, if you can buy four-wheel drive, forty grand to buy a lot of four-wheel drive backhoe.
I mean, that, that may be an option, you'd look at.
Any idea of, you know, I know you said the four-wheel drive was out, and I know the air conditioner is out, what that would cost to fix, or we don't know.
Did it, did it have AC on it?
Yes.
Oh, it did, oh, it's just broken.
Yeah, it was caught on fire a couple of times, and now it's brushed, it burned all the wires and lines.
But we don't know what those repairs would cost.
Air conditioner was three thousand dollars the first time, it burned it, second time, it, of course.
But the four-wheel drive is probably the bigger.
Yeah, that's something in the front plan here.
Well, all things considered, I think we have a balanced budget that is within our fifty percent guideline that was given previous to this, with the three percent increase on the step, so I would make a motion to approve that.
Well, Eric, is that without the tourism assistant, full-time, or?
That's, that's as it's proposed, so without, without the assistant.
So I just want to take a minute to, uh, to shock Joe Steiger and agree with him on tourism and advocate for that. I'm, I'm on record for, for having the opposite view earlier, but if, if we're gonna do something, we should do it to win, and I, I fully agree with Joe on that, so I think we should consider that thirty-six thousand, which probably puts us, if, if we did that as is, Eric, I think puts us at like forty-nine point six percent, so I guess.
Did you calculate the math on that?
I, yeah, but don't test me, because I, I would defer to you, and I would defer to Brian on that, and Sue, obviously, but, I mean, if, if you dipped to forty-nine point six-ish percent, do you need to pass an ordinance, or how, how does that work? Do we, do we want to do that?
I think it was just a guideline that we.
Not, not by ordinance?
Previous boards.
It, it's a resolution that's supposed to be upheld as a policy. But my, my expectation, if it's forty-nine point six, it's gonna show, it'll reflect fifty percent. If it drops below forty-nine point five, it'll show forty-nine percent.
Sure.
I mean, is there, there's, there's some pay raise considered for this position, going off of the step plan, over what we were paying for a tourism director? Is there any belief that a better-paid tourism director position will attract a more qualified?
Sort of like when you advocate for a police officer raise, do you think you might get higher quality personnel? So I'd say.
So, I mean, is there some possibility that a more qualified tourism person could handle the responsibilities without a full-time assistant? And look at a full-time assistant.
I don't think we need a full-time assistant, I think if you do a hybrid of one of the welcome center persons that, that we need to add in and, and kind of make that, because I don't think that, that staff person, start with, let them justify it. I think start with a part-time social media assistant, and maybe the other time that they spend, you know, manning the hours at the welcome center. Uh, could, and then, and then let them come back a year from now to justify a full-time position.
Or, and this is a terrible suggestion, so, I mean, there was talk at the last meeting of, of hiring a firm for some, some portions. Do we hire a, a tourism director, use funds that we would have used to hire a part-time person, and dedicate a firm to do the social media stuff that knows, that knows what they're doing?
Well.
I don't think that's an option personally.
Yeah, Happy indicated, you know, if we hire somebody for last meeting, we're still gonna have to pay for something else, you know, whatever, you know, social media, you know, that is and stuff. There's something else that's gonna come along with this and stuff, but you quoted something earlier, Joe, you said something about for every dollar you spend, you can expect nine dollars.
That's what the State Department of Tourism and Economic Development, they've done studies, and.
I've never heard that number and stuff.
Every dollar you invest in, uh, marketing, you're supposed to get back, uh, nine.
I mean, it's, again, my ignorance, but it seems like our budget should reflect that, then, if we're spending however much we spend, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars on tourism a year, then our budget should be nine times that, and it's not.
Well, depends on.
Our, our revenue is not that.
Well, then, is that nine dollars what comes into all of the businesses that are affected to it? Not necessarily the nine dollars are coming into ours as our portion of the.
But the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars we're spending is coming out of our budget. Which again, is, which again, is comprised of the money that they're spending in, in taxes, so I, I get that.
Right.
Argument, but I don't think that, and I, I don't mean to, I don't mean to buck the, the statistics.
I, I find it hard to believe, nine to one, I find it hard to believe, but even if it was two to one.
I'm not saying that there's no value.
Even if it was two to one, you know, I mean, if we go to the very other extreme, you know, or just one to one, I mean, what other department gets back a dollar for every dollar you spend? You know, so, um, that's.
I, I get that, but I, I would love to see in the future spending more money on economic development and take a, a chance on, on increasing our sales tax revenue over, over a gamble of, of throwing money at tourism and marketing.
I, I think.
As, as our sole source of saving our town.
Right, so Happy with, uh, kind of on that line and stuff, you know, um, there's no numbers in here for a, a projected cost involved with a new subdivision. You know, because we're talking about some way to fund, uh, right up front, a million and a half dollar road extension. Where do we pay for that? Because that, that is economic development, um, how do we fund that?
I don't know, we haven't decided how you want to fund it, because we haven't gotten that project brought to the board and presented as a, as a plan, and then how much the city wants to participate, and then where you decide if that's on the front. That's, that's wagerable in an equivalent to a budget.
Right.
But we have those funds in capital projects and some of those things, you know, so we have that, that nest egg that we've kind of been pretty good financially, and, and that's good steward, hopefully, of taxpayer money, so we have that money there that we could use for those, or, you know.
It still looks, it still looks like it's gonna be a bond issue and stuff, rather than just a capital.
It's gonna be a bond issue, I mean, I, I can't imagine.
Anything but a bond issue, right?
I think it is, so. Just for, for that price tag.
Right.
You know, the county has said that they were there to help us, but we don't know to what extent, so.
Now, I know, and I posed this question to you before, because we've talked about different bond issues, we've talked about as much as fourteen million dollars and stuff, to redo all of our streets and stuff, but we don't have, I don't see where we have the funds to pay for any bond issues. I know we have the assets, we have the bond for that much money, but I don't see the money here to be able to pay for it.
And that, the question is, what, where is that funding mechanism coming from? Are you going to utilize the existing capital improvements, uh, tax that we have? Right now, it's helping pay for City Hall. You have a water tower payment that's gonna be coming soon from the county, twenty-six, so that comes out of that capital improvement tax, that's, that's been dedicated to that. There's a loan on there right now that goes away, there's a, in twenty-six, yeah, so that's what we're taking up with the payment of the water tower. So if that's one of your sources, or you're gonna pull it out of the general fund, I think that's when you talk about the general obligation for a, a bond issue, is that you're looking for some sort of funding mechanism to help pay for that.
And that's where I operate a little on the side of caution and stuff, because we have these things coming up, um, any number of things and stuff, and we're all based that off of existing revenue, and it's just, we're, you know, we base that off of always being the same year after year.
The great thing about this is, we're, we're talking about bringing in rooftops, right? So we're looking at a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred new home sites with not only property taxes, but sales taxes off those, you know, so.
That's our economic development.
Yeah, I mean, uh, even more so, right, so, um, add in some additional potential there.
Other than just being, that being just that basis.
And that won't be an overnight type of development, so you're, it could be ten to thirty years down the road, so it's not immediate that you're gonna see, that, that, those taxes are gonna reflect in what's your, what your revenue is. But that's, that's the growth that you're looking for.
The people we polled and surveyed have told us that it's a problem.
Lack of housing, is that, yeah.
Lack of available housing.
Right now, currently, there is one home, non-commercial, there's one residential home for sale in St. James's.
So it's kinda where there's two, right, five feet?
It's probably pending, so if you look, yeah, so I looked yesterday, so I could be wrong, but as of yesterday, there was one home that was, uh, for. So I looked yesterday, so I could be wrong, but as of yesterday, there was one home that was for sale that wasn't pending or under contract.
Which, right?
That one just went live. So there might be two now. There might be two.
I see two signs, but I don't know what they're thinking.
I've made a motion.
Can you restate your motion? I'm sorry.
To approve the step increase plus 3% budget as it's been proposed.
Discussion. I'm going to probably beat up Steve on the backhoe. I'm going to probably go after those additional funding for the tourism department. So I'll probably go on your motion because I'd like to see just a little bit of work done on a couple of those little things.
I think.
Might beat up Chief on an $8,000, $9,000 copier, push it off the next year. You know, maybe they can use the new one in City Hall if there's breaks down for a temporary rent. I don't think you can come out here and do it. I understand that, but yeah. So. The only two or three little areas is where I. I'm sorry, Happy, I cut you off.
No, I'm just saying, there probably isn't as bad as ours. Ours gets used because, you know, illegal or paperwork that we produce. This is why we look at doing that. But both of them were purchased at the same time last time, so we was including them both. So yeah, you want to push off the copier, we're going to push that off.
Maybe just swap them. You take the police departments, they can take yours for a little bit, get the use on it and then we'll be looking at buying two next year.
We'll wear that tire for exactly.
Exactly. So Steve has said that there is a possibility that they could put some money into fixing the backhoe.
And buying a used one.
And buying a.
Then next year, look at maybe a new one. So we have a.
I wouldn't be in favor of buying a used one because you're probably buying.
You're getting somebody else's headache.
Backhoe is coming out of dedicated funds.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I was wondering what the concern was because there's no salaries that come out of the streets. It's, it is a, you know, you're just looking at a bottom line. If you don't like the bottom line, yeah, I understand.
But the copier for the police department would come out of bottom line.
Right, right. For the general fund.
We're going to be doing.
Makes it easy spending that $38,000 taking the water tower down, you know, that came out of a dedicated.
We also have block cameras in there, $5,000.
The initial cost of the block cameras, it's $18,000.
That's right. Yeah. So we pulled that out. Again, I said that.
Is he still a no?
So I would amend my motion to approve it minus the copier for the police department with a 3% step raise.
What about the tourism department?
Oh, no.
What's our timeframe, Happy, if it doesn't go tonight?
Well, we got, so technically we have next Thursday. We have an extra Thursday in August. And you have another Thursday. And then you have the one you really need to adopt it at, which is September 14.
So is there any possibility that not going with visit widget this year, using that $14,000 to hire a firm to do the social marketing in place of a full-time assistant would get us any closer to what you want to do, Joe?
I think you would do, I mean, are you talking about potentially increasing that salary range for the tourism slash marketing director? Because I think we've approached that a little bit too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're advertising the range of 53, did you say?
52 to 60.
52 to 60?
53 to 60, 52 to 60,000. And so starting pay, you can get, you'll make more over the years.
Well, sure.
Because based on what my department heads make, how important is tourism to the city? What are you, are you wanting that, that salary is going to reflect what you place as importance on that? And responsibility, yeah.
And liability.
I'm trying to use your CBiz report. I'm trying to get the most value out of that, right? So I'll get former Alman Armbruster in here upset with me if I'm not trying to think about what, and I think she's got a point, absolutely. So I think we need to fully fund the tourism because I think it is a priority. So if you want to look at what I think about the tourism, I think it's one of the main industries that supports this town.
Fully fund as in raise the pay for the director and do a full-time assistant?
No, I think that, I don't think that that person needs a full-time assistant. So I think if we're.
Advertising in the higher price, the higher salary.
So I'd like to put the $36,000 back in there, but it to be split between the full-time person and the director and a part-time assistant. And just so we have the budget in there. So if we have to make an amendment to figure out, you know, the.
So are we shorthanded now on welcome center staff?
Yeah, we've got three days we're not covering.
So the next position that we hire there, we could potentially hybrid this position?
Yeah, yeah.
For some additional help?
But you're saying 18,000 for that person?
Well, sure, yes, but also raise the tourism director's starting pay as well.
No, I'm saying 18,000 would go to your assistant and you're looking at 18,000. So you're looking at 78,000 potentially?
No, that's why I think we need to discuss what we think for a start, yeah, yes.
Where did we advertise the position when we hired previous tourism directors?
We did indeed the local paper, which you'll see that ad coming out.
Well, I was more or less, where did we, like, what salary range did we advertise for that? Where, where did we hire, in our internal range, where did she wind up being? Was that on the top end?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was the most we were probably going to pay for that position?
We would have probably gone up to 60,000.
Okay.
But, you know, that would have been the unicorn that you found.
Sure.
Previous directors, didn't we have one that was making more than that?
I think Sanders did. But we were getting extra money from the county as well. We got money from the county and that was what helped supplement it.
Based on the two inputs I've got, I'm a no on the visit widget for now.
But that could be reallocated towards Joe's initiative as well. Sorry, Alderman Steiger's initiative.
You don't get fined around here, I don't think.
And I don't know what, I don't know how different it would be if we, you know, if we advertised it at 60 to 68. I don't know if that moves the needle or not.
I think it would.
Well, I mean, it helps probably.
But you're placing more importance on the tourism director than any of our other department heads, except for the police chief.
Well, again, the downside such that you're talking about.
Pam and Dave and.
That's a tough way to phrase it. So I want to tread lightly when I talk about this. Not to diminish anybody's importance, but I think when we talk about tourism though, we're talking about funding street paving, you know, we're talking about funding stormwater stuff. I'm just throwing it out there.
There, and I don't know that I've seen enough facts to support that if we fund this, that it will come.
To be fair though, we've been in limbo with the position for some time, right? So. I don't know.
We talked about it at the last meeting about some type of commission and joint venture with the county and the chamber and. To me, that's, that's a lifeline of tourism here is having all of those parties involved. But putting these numbers in here, that's not taking any possible development there into consideration.
So were the flock cameras scratched from this? Are there no flock cameras in this?
No, because we, the purchase price is more than what we anticipated the first time was like $5,000. That's maintenance. That's the yearly cost of maintenance.
Was there money allocated in this year's budget for flock cameras that we've not spent?
We, I think so, but yeah, I think the cost for the flock cameras were more than what we expected.
I know. But my question is, is there money for flock cameras that's not going to be spent?
This budget we were basing flock cameras that we are not getting. I thought the flock camera was in front of the cash, but wow.
Not listed as a capital.
Not listed as a capital, but I thought if we carried that line item over.
So that would be under, yeah, that would be under capital improvements.
5,000. And I think we have.
That was reduced.
Okay, so two.
Would it be make or break anything if we saved that? What was the 5,000 a piece at that time for last year?
It was, it ended up being 2,500 a piece. This year it's 3,000 a piece. But the problem now is the, they've got a crash tested pole which raised the additional installation up to like $2,000. So it would not break my heart if that needed to go elsewhere. If we had a couple, which budget that would be the first thing I'm done. And I know county is in the process of adding additional cameras to the office of the city.
So if we took that $5,000, put it with the $14,000 for the visit widget, we have an offset to the part-time employee?
There's more than $5,000 figures. We figured the whole function there. So it's a lot higher than what $5,000 figures.
Yeah, wasn't there, was there a monthly fee also or an annual?
It was that yearly fee of $6,000 for the initial fee that we're planning on.
Uh, I'm sorry, say that again?
So if we apply the money that we've put towards that initiative that we're not going to spend now towards the, with the visit widget money?
Well, I think the visit, I'm not set on the actual program itself, visit widget, you know, but that's money that that director is using for marketing for, you know, for the city. So just because we don't do visit widget, I think that that budget needs to stay there so that we can, we might choose a different route. We might not do visit widget this year, but I think it still needs to stay in the budget for the. I mean, it's, we're going to raise the salary of this person, hire somebody that's, you know, more competent than we think that we've had before, and then they're not going to have any tools or resources to do anything. So I don't want to hamstring the new person without a budget to be able to do anything. So that's why I'm scared to not fully fund this. I don't want to just give it carte blanche, but at the same time, I don't want to spend extra money on a tourism director and then they come in and not have any budget to do anything.
So we figured in the step plus the 3% which will apply to the tourism director to get somebody at the higher end of that. We've cut the police department's copier and their flock cameras, which should get us to close to that $18,000 for the part-time hybrid position.
Correct.
In the welcome. And that keeps your visit widget.
Yep.
You're talking about two different years on the cameras. You're talking about this year on the.
Well, but that's still carryover. I mean, that's still.
But it's not in here.
No, but it would be, it would be carryover from this year's budget. Does that check all the boxes?
It's getting pretty darn close. I don't, I think you're making a good investment.
All right. So I will amend my motion.
$18,000 budget for the assistant.
A hybrid position. Welcome center attendant slash social media manager. I don't know what you want to call it, yeah.
To the $18,000 plus benefits. For that, part-timers don't earn the benefits of full-time workers, so it won't be as much.
Now, can I ask a silly question potentially? Now, we hired this person and they do not feel like they need that assistant, but they would like to hire an agency to handle social media or some marketing arm. That money could be reallocated, correct?
It could be used for that.
We can just make an amendment and change the budget.
The number in the budget, so it's there.
We'd be hiring a firm instead of the county.
Yeah, I mean, it's similar, but different, I guess.
Because yes, we'll hire the tourism director, then we would hire, that person would hire the assistant or come up with a better solution.
Yeah, sure.
So Happy, when we have a specific item on here, and I don't mean to beat you up on the backhoe, Steve, but say somewhere along the line.
I'll beat him up on it.
But it's a dedicated fund. It doesn't help us in the general.
Well, I mean, you're right, but.
Yeah, this is in general to any, any fund in here.
It'll manage, right. I get that.
If we decide somewhere along the line, they decide not to buy an item, you know, and they decide to do something else like maybe a second dump truck, you know, what approval does that take and stuff to be able to switch from a backhoe to another dump truck or something? Just as an example.
We have to approve any major expenditure as a, as a purchase.
But if they have a line item entry or an item.
Right, but when we bought cars, we would get the budget approved, but then when we went to purchase the car, we had to come and get approval to actually purchase the cars once that, once the vehicles were ready. So any major expenditure, we'll have to approve as a board anyways.
And it'd be a different verbic, so you'd have to have an amendment on your, on your budget, wouldn't you?
So what's going to happen is Steve or David or whoever's going to come for you and say, hey, you know, we wanted to do this, but we don't, we don't think we can get it. We want to do this instead. And you're going to go, eh, yeah, that sounds good. So then we bring it to you as a purchase. And then also then we, we don't do it every time. We do twice a year, we do budget amendments so that what you had approved before then gets approved, you know, gets adopted by the time, we do it in the middle of the year and then at the end of the year.
Otherwise, we get dinged by the auditor, right? We don't, yeah. So we have to change the budget and approve the purchase.
Yeah, so you say it, we move through with it and then, you know, we make that purchase and then we bring back the budget amendment later.
Because if some of these things, just like we did with the van truck and stuff, it never happened in the year we had it budgeted, it fell true and stuff. So I was just wondering if all of a sudden dump trucks become available, we're down two, right? You know, that we can shift that funds from one item to the next and stuff and have more years.
The way we always operated, it was the bottom line. I mean, once, if you came in at the end of the year, even if you were over, over on one line item, but you were under on your bottom line, and we do the budget amendments to justify that, then the auditors are happy with that. So I will amend my motion
Again?
to include taking out the $8,000 for the police department copier, looking at the carryover for the flock cameras, using both of those line items to fund $18,000 for the part-time assistant for the tourism director and move forward with the step increase plus 3%.
I'll second that motion for that amendment. I'm not sure if it's a.
It's a motion. We'll call it a motion.
So you removed all your other motions?
Yes, all previous motions have been withdrawn respectfully.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second.
You mean, just a consensus of, I mean, you can vote like a regular voice, but what I have a question on is, did we set $18,000 for the assistant or are we also adding $18,000 on for the tourism director? Or are we saying with the number that I had budgeted?
I think we're including the step and the 3% in that position as well.
I think the, I mean, on the topic of salary, I don't mind that.
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right, good, good.
Hey, because you're going to be estimating now that they'll be closer to what you might advertise would be.
Mid 50s.
Probably 55 to 62.
But the budget reflects 55, correct, when we're looking at this number?
Plus benefits. But that can be, and that's adjustable in that we don't have the full-time staff down at the welcome center. So we don't always spend the whole, that whole budget line.
Okay, so we have a motion from Alderman Bennett. We have a second from Alderman Steiger. All in favor?
All right.
Go, we have to do.
Yeah, what do you want to do about dedicated funds? We've got park, street, tourism.
I would make a motion to approve those as presented.
So this restaurant is now for, oh. How much of that was a grant?
All of it.
All of it.
So that's all of our funds. That's two new bathrooms up at the, here market park. One by the big pavilion. One by the big pavilion, the other down near South Street. So that was, park's department made that recommendation, and that's how they wanna spend their, their money. This is partly what we were dedicating when we got the ARPA funding, 'cause they wanted outdoor recreation. We thought those were the two items that really needed to be boosted up up there.
But none of that hundred sixty is carryover.
It's actually all carryover this year.
Right, okay.
From the ARPA.
From the ARPA, right.
Is that those modular, I'm not sure who we're talking about.
Yes.
Discussion. Do we want to go back to streets and have Steve look at the option of a backhoe? A used backhoe, I should say. And then next year, look at buying a, a new, um, backhoe, and we can decide which one of the, the current one or the used one we buy, if we wanna sell that one. So that we have two backhoes in inventory.
I don't know that I love this approach, but as it sits, it's balanced, and we'll have to approve any of those purchases anyway. So if we give him the option to buy what he needs to have after he expends every other option. You know, if we, if we limit ourselves there, I mean, at some point in time, if we had to go back, then it would be another budget amendment to, to go over that line item for purchase.
I'm not in favor of a used backhoe, I don't think that.
No, I think the purchase for someone else's problem.
Right.
But I think if you repair what you have, I mean, that's gonna be our option.
Right.
So if you don't wanna purchase one, I mean, you're probably looking at thirty, thirty-five thousand repairs with the front axle or the transfer case, electrical system.
If we put that thirty-five thousand in, I'm not trying to leave the fire.
Yep.
But if we put that thirty-five thousand into it, is there a possibility we could get four years out of that, or at least that we would have in mind?
Well, we can still get, you know, another year or two out of it, it's still gonna be used in fire, it's still gonna be used in assault, so it's gonna continue to deteriorate. Just know that in a year or two, we, we won't have an option.
But she'll have a very good case to come back to us and at least beat me up on that.
Yeah. I mean, if we can put, say, thirty-five thousand off to the side for repairs.
But that's just shoot from the hip.
Yep.
It could be fifty thousand.
Yep. Yeah, we can get the guy.
Fifty hundred, thirty-five thousand.
I don't wanna do an estimate on this.
Right, right.
You're saying thirty-five thousand is, or close to that, is the repair that we only have?
That's, that would be my estimate.
That's another whole number. But without those repairs, I mean, we can't push that firm out back into the drive.
Yeah, you can back up, take a run at it.
Yeah. I think we know what that does.
That's great for the load.
Has to see both.
Wouldn't they get burned up?
And no air conditioning, any closed ad, this is not an option.
Yeah. Against the fire.
Right. Well, I mean, just in normal ways.
And then theoretically, if that worked, then we'd have another hundred thousand dollars to put back into that street department fund and, and bring that number back up a little bit more comfortable.
Dick, where are we, where were, what was he thinking when we were at the streets? Through forty-nine, through three-sixty.
So you're, Happy, your four-seventy-seven number is not a real number, you take two hundred thousand off of that, because that's what we've budgeted this year. But yeah, we're gonna have to write a check next year if we get it done in time for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
So your, your unaudited starting amount has that two hundred and some thousand in.
Right.
So then you're eventually taking that out because you have to spend it. So it is a real number, because we'll spend it after the end of the year. We'll spend it in the beginning of the budget.
I just, uh, next year, when we approach this, uh, overlay thing, let's do everything we can to put definite dates in there, that we're not doing this every year. Because I'll tell you what, there's nothing I hear about anymore than the bad streets in town. There is no more topic that is more vocal by people.
That's what makes the five fifty on, on City Hall remodel.
Oh, it's just, if you look at all, it's, it's the highest, it's the highest expense that we've got on here, and people are driving down Mogadishu, you know? So you can't tell me there's not one neighborhood that doesn't have a horrible street.
And what five hundred thousand wouldn't do, but when Eric and I looked up there before, we talked about the police department, I'm telling you, we were in danger. The place was gonna burn down or whatever was gonna happen, so.
We needed a facility and we couldn't buy one for eight hundred thousand dollars.
This is a preservation of what we have, and it was the cheapest alternate before we faced something a lot worse.
We couldn't buy a building in town as big as we needed and had to build one.
Nope, we looked at them and there was nothing, you know, nothing out there that was gonna. Just like buying a backhoe. It was something that had to be done.
But we're not, we're fixing one, so.
Right. I knew the air conditioner was a problem, I didn't realize the boiler drive wasn't working.
So I have a motion on the table.
Second?
No, we had discussion, and then we checked it again.
So.
Did you second it back?
No, I, I asked for discussion before he got, before.
Take this back to the original motion. Just to prove.
To approve the, the other dedicated funds as, as proposed.
Okay, second.
So, but we're, we're amending it with the backhoe, correct, though?
No, we're leaving the funds in there, right?
Oh, okay.
That's what I thought.
With the understanding that we will repair rather than buy, if that's, if that's a feasible option.
We have to repair.
Yeah.
No doubt, we have to repair, it won't do what we do as a second backhoe and stuff, so that's a given.
So you can look at the, the cost of repairs, get a good estimate, and then also look around, see if there's other backhoes. If you don't use backhoes, you're worth it, but.
Not my vote.
So, yeah, that's up to you guys to say.
I'm sure we're not kicking that can down the road and it's just gonna come back to bite us.
I think if, if Steve is saying he thinks we can get another year out of it, I don't think we're kicking the can too far down the road. 'Cause we would still have then a, a decent backhoe for a backup for when we do buy one next year, because we don't have that now.
Right. Gives us some options, and we're gonna repair what we got, and then we'll look at, you know.
Is there funding in this year's budget to, to repair that?
I don't think so.
Not probably that much.
Well, I mean, it is, because we're spending it on the streets, but it would lower or whatever.
You're gonna dip in that three hundred and forty-nine thousand.
I don't even know if we get a gun for the end of the budget.
Okay.
We do have a motion.
And a second.
Paul, this, hold him in down in a second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Happy.
And then, uh, one thing, um, 'cause I think we've run through our presentation department items and we've gotten through the end here. Wanted to discuss some, so Happy and I had a conversation after Tanan's resignation. Happy shouldered that load before, he's currently shouldering it again in interim. So he's wearing another hat, um, and we kinda just had a discussion of that, should we do some additional compensation for the time that he is undertaking that additional role.
Somewhere in this process, we've promoted a, an assistant superintendent or an assistant city manager, so is there, are there any of those tasks that he can delegate to Dave to help offset that?
I mean, we, we're all covering a lot of, doing a lot at this point, I mean, yeah, we can, I can farm some of it out to him, or try to.
We passed that along, though, with no increase in salary, just some increased vacation days or something, didn't we, on Dave, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we need to do something.
I mean, what we're, really what we're talking about is, you know, for the time that he's putting in while we're in the interim, you know, it's really just reallocating the budget that we had already, we had the salary we'd already budgeted for initially. It's just kind of reallocating some of those dollars for him.
From the tourism director that we're not paying down.
Correct, correct.
And will only last while we're.
Is there a, yeah, is there a sunset on this, or?
Until we have a resolution to the problem.
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't need to go any longer than that.
Well, there's gonna be some crossover, some training and some, uh, some, so I, I think it probably should, uh, potentially carry over for at least some amount of time, so, 'cause.
So that's something we do in open discussion.
First, an employee doesn't just show up and know what to do, you know?
I mean, it, it could have been, I think, we can have it in open discussion, uh, my understanding is Happy, we can't have it in open discussion.
I think you should have it in open discussion, because it's not a performance issue and it's not hiring, firing, or promotion.
I think to some extent, it's a salary position and, and you assume the roles that need to be assumed, and everybody that's in a salary position here has certainly done more than just their job to make sure that, that the wheel is turned.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, you know, you, you look, our police chief and fire chief and the other people in City Hall too, I mean, so they're, they're carrying the load too, so it's a touchy subject, because there's a lot of other people carrying the weight when we're down a fireman or down a policeman or down a, a tourism director, so it's.
Or a water department, bill collector, or, I mean, they're, everybody's done it. I, 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 and I don't mean to imply that I don't appreciate the additional work, 'cause I do, but that's part of being in a salary position.
But other than salary, the hourly people would be paid in addition, they're putting in additional hours.
And that's why it typically falls on the salary employees, that's why, you know, we, we work the midnights and the overtime shifts to keep the man overtime.
So I know Happy can't have any input in this and stuff, and how, how do we go about that?
Well.
Did you have a recommendation?
I mean, we can take kind of a pro-rated version of Tanan's salary and reallocate that over, over time until we do have a, a new director in that role. That's one way to look at it.
And you're talking about just the salary, not?
We could, we could set a dollar amount. It's not, it's not a one-time payment, it would be spread out over, basically, the spread out.
Like a month or?
Yeah, per pay period until we do have a.
So is that a percentage of her salary monthly?
Well, and we would probably have to get into numbers, I mean, we, you know, if we're quantifying it, I mean, I, I think it would, you know, it's probably somewhere in maybe like the ten thousand dollar range, spread out over probably a few months.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, what I said is, what I would look at is a ten thousand dollar increase over a year.
Oh, I thought, wow.
Hold on, hold on. What I meant was, that would be my yearly salary, say, ten, you know, ten thousand dollars extra, but I'd only be paid for the time that I'm actually filling in for the tourism. So it's not ten thousand dollars, it's just whatever that rate.
That would be.
Touching club with that amount.
Seemed like a solid number to throw out, because we also have, and, and we're gonna change it up this year. This year, the raises are gonna go into effect in October, when we approve it. The, um, uh, we have the three percent, and we haven't, we have not discussed whether the three percent is just all, all COLA raise, or if you're gonna request that a half of it would be merit, but that will also go into effect October one for the COLA. If it's merit, then it goes with the performance review in February. So there will be an increase for everybody coming this October.
This, um, spreadsheet here reflects COLA?
This spreadsheet reflects everything.
Well, COLA, right, so not, not performance. It would include that step plus three percent COLA, not split.
Just, yeah, it's everything.
Right, then you could split it up.
Everything over the, everything over the budget, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you, if you, if you split this three percent.
It's not COLA.
I'm sorry?
Are you guys saying it's not a COLA?
Well, if you split it up some performance and some COLA, then you might not give out all of it. So, I mean, I'm assuming this reflects straight COLA right now.
It's the full three percent, yes, yeah.
And my vote would be that it'd be a COLA, that it not be a merit, that it's.
I agree with that.
Merit or performance, right, yeah.
Right.
I would contest that, especially as small as we are, like, we know when somebody is underperforming and we're handling that.
And it goes against the street level.
What about if somebody is overperforming?
I don't think we can quantify that, I mean, then they put in for a promotion when a, when a flock dump's available.
So, you, you guys are subject matter experts when it comes to the police force, but I mean, are you saying we're not in favor of an incentive program to, and, and I, granted, I don't know what it is to go above and beyond as a, as an officer.
And I think that's what's hard to qualify, because, you know, our, our merit, our, our evaluation process is follow policy and procedures. Well, you can't follow policy and procedure better than the policy and procedure is written. I can't do better at, at following rules than, than following rules.
I, I wanna have this conversation, we finish this conversation about Happy first, and then when we get to the, because this is gonna be at another meeting, the, the three percent, I assume? 'Cause we're not, we're not discussing that tonight, are we?
I mean, when you adopt the budget I brought to you, it has.
We're approving the three percent, he's saying the, the message by which that's paid out doesn't need to be decided.
We're not deciding that tonight, correct?
Okay. Well, but a previous board pretty much decided that, that it was fifty percent merit and fifty percent.
Well, that was a previous board, and that was the board that's sitting here now.
I'm on the fence, I don't, I mean, I, I see both, you know.
Again, I mean, we're, we're talking about a competitive landscape that, that we're fighting to keep people, fighting to get people. A three percent raise is not going to break us, it's not going to bankrupt us. We appreciate our employees, I would like to, to show our employees that we appreciate them. Again, I think that they are subject to disciplinary action when they do poorly and up to and including termination if, if they're not performing as they should. So then, we should pay them the cost of living, the cost of living is, is just that, it's a cost of living, so. That's my opinion.
Managers agree with that, I mean, it's a tool for you, I mean.
I agree, I think the cost of living is three percent regardless, and then if you're looking at, at rewarding somebody for going above and beyond or doing more, then you need to have something above that three percent, because regardless, everybody's cost of living went up three percent, in my opinion.
You're not gonna have that tool this year, though.
I agree, I'm not saying we do, but I'm just saying regardless, everybody's, everybody's cost of living went up three percent, so I think everybody should be eligible for the three percent and not be merit.
So you're okay with not having a tool this year for your, for your, your?
I agree, because I also think that if you don't have that tool, you find managers maybe not evaluating fairly just to make sure everybody gets their full cost of living. I think it's intentional, because you're gonna make sure everybody gets at least their three percent cost of living regardless, so I don't think you get a fair evaluation by cutting the cost of living in that. So wherever you're gonna do a cost of living, and then at some point you're where you reward people for going above, you may get more, a little more fair evaluation from your managers.
But, back to the Happy discussion. So is that, is that the recommendation on the table for?
So I was trying to quantify the time that he's gonna spend doing this job in the interim. Ten thousand was a, a number that we discussed. Uh, the structure, I, I grouped that up, but, I mean, however we wanna structure, it, of course, is up to us. I mean, we can also consider other options, it was just an initial recommendation.
But you're saying ten percent, or ten thousand annualized, um, every month for the length of the time until we get a tourism director in place?
At this point, I mean, he, he could be in that role for another month, he could be in it another four months, but the, the recommendation would still be the ten.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Ten thousand annualized, every month.
Annualized every month.
Then that'd be about eight hundred bucks a month, I guess, probably, uh, gross.
I mean, if you guys have other thoughts, we're open about it as well, it's just an initial thought.
Doesn't sound like, doesn't sound like a lot, but.
Well, I mean, if he's expending twenty percent more effort, you know, he's already, we all know as a CA is working a hundred and ten percent. So if he's working a hundred and thirty percent, I mean, we probably need to compensate.
Are we leaving anybody out? I, I, I mean, are, we're gonna have any? Are there other people picking up? Are there other people picking up slack that'll be jaded by this decision?
Can't answer that.
Come on, Mayor, get your crystal ball out.
I think everybody picks a, picks a, you know, staffed up the welcome center, City Hall staff, and, more responsibility.
The police department is not doing any extra tourism.
Well, they were going to start selling ads on the cars, I mean, we're going to talk to, talk to you about a billboard scrolling in the back window.
The Cardinals did it.
Visit C-9.
Especially when they drive home, I'd be good at that.
College athletes can do that now and stuff, so why not?
I'll move to increase the 10,000 annualized per month until we hire a new tourism director.
I'll second that.
And just, just to clarify, so you're, effectively, we're going to pay him, pay 10,000 regardless of when we hire?
No, you'll be paying 10,000 divided by 12 every month.
Until we hire.
Until we hire.
Until we hire, so that's the motion that's on the table.
Roughly 800 dollars gross every month in addition.
I just wanted to clarify, so that's the motion. Alderman, ready to have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I believe we've run through our agenda, does anybody have any other items that wants to discuss? Anything else as it pertains to this budget work section?
I appreciate you guys coming in tonight, thank you.
Yeah. So with that, go ahead, manager.
Absorb.
Thanks, everybody, for working through that.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you all for the time you put in.